What the heck can I hire you for?
Oh.
We have one.
Yeah, but do you pay me or do they pay?
The residents pay you.
Yes.
I don't know what.
Residents.
They just crack up. They just crack up. The whole thing. I'm trying to crack in Florida for a little bit. In Florida. In forty seven.
Wow. Seven o'clock, sir.
She gave it.
Okay.
I hate you.
Yeah.
I would've thrown it.
All right, let's call the Village Workshop order here November fifth. Our first order of business tonight is a Village Board meeting. A survey was done and we have a copy of the results of that with the different villages and the number of meetings that they have per month. Another one?
I sent no. Had it.
She updates it like three times a day, so.
And the listing is here for the villages in Monroe County. Rodport has three meetings a month, two regular meetings and then one workshop. The, we have two regular meetings and then one workshop. The rest of the villages have either two or one, which would be a village meeting and a workshop. Or even workshop. So it was brought to my attention here for discussion whether you were going to have a workshop change, changing two meetings per month with a workshop change for a time of six o'clock. There is, there are two, three other villages. Fairport goes at six for a workshop. I see that Hilton goes to five for their one meeting a month, which I wouldn't put for at all. And Spencerport looks at four thirty apparently for one workshop, which is again too early for a public to be at, but I would be in favor as opposed to six o'clock. So I'm asking for discussion on Village Board meetings.
Doesn't the town have five thirty workshops at all? Right?
Yes.
They always, they always used to.
Yeah, no, I think.
I don't know if they changed that.
No, I think they still do. I didn't see this on the sheet here, but I think she just.
Yes.
Hilton had his one. Yeah. Honeywell.
Didn't we have a question or something that Don, I think Don, I asked you and you said you didn't know about it, but can you, so if we have bills in the timeframe, are we allowed to do it by email? I heard yes by one party and I've heard no by another party. So which?
No, you can't, you can't have a public meeting by.
Not a public meeting, but paying the bills.
Yeah, but you have to approve to pay the bills. You have to take a vote.
Ask a good night.
To spend money.
So this is the other direction, I guess. I want, I just want some clarity.
I don't know how to get.
Nikon said we could do it.
Really?
So I just want to know.
In your annual meeting, you, you make a resolution that says that you can, all of these bills that you can vote on and then the bills are signed off at the next meeting, but they can be paid.
Just like a badge, free thing?
Yeah.
Are there certain, certain kinds of bills that can be paid that way? I thought that mattered.
The other.
Handout you gave that there were.
I, I'm not, I'm not too sure about that, but the attorney for Nikon did say that you can also choose to, if there's a bill that's over a certain amount, you can have like a kind of, if something's over a certain amount, then you can, you know, make that wait, that needs approval, but like anything under a certain amount, you can approve without, without like having to do it every day.
So I think for, so I think we need to get clarity on that, so we'll make sure we're on the same page.
Need your blessing, guys.
Well, I think what Heather is saying, but again, I haven't talked to anybody at Nikon, but if you take a resolution that says something to the effect that any bill under two hundred dollars does not require board approval to pay, so then technically you're not needing to approve that particular bill. But if you approve a bill, I don't think you could do it via email. You got, it's gotta be at a, if you're gonna take a vote on something, it's gotta be at a public meeting. Violates the open meetings law.
That's why we pay the big bucks.
So, so and I don't know anything is about, you know, taking one resolution annually, you haven't done this, but I don't know if you can, that says, that totally confused me what you said.
Me?
Yeah, I didn't understand at all what you said about taking, an annual resolution that says what?
So I think would be part of the.
How responsible does that be?
Okay.
Can you, do you, can you describe it a little better?
We do it now for utility bills and I think the bit.
Yeah, there are three things that I thought we did it for.
Yes, we do. I apologize. There are ones that you, that you can. I'm, I'm still getting more clarification, but Nikon said it's okay, but there are some things you have to do first. I'll give them clarification.
Can we approve the bills if a workshop and then a regular meeting, like approve the bills twice a month?
Well, I did ask Dorothy about that. She recommended if you're going to do two meetings a month, which they do, they said that you shouldn't do a workshop, you should just do two meetings and then you vote, you can vote. There's nothing, there's nowhere that says you can't vote at a workshop. You guys just choose not to, which is fine, but she recommended just having two meetings and not doing a workshop, which is what they do.
So the majority of these that are listed here as villages that have two meetings in a month, are they both?
One meeting, one workshop.
Are they both meetings, Village Board meetings, or do they include workshop?
Yes.
No.
In one, Honeywell's all going as one meeting and they don't even have a workshop. And several other ones only have one. Couple of them have a treasurer's meeting. There were like two that had those, but.
There has been times though when workshops are crucial to what we're doing.
Which is, that, that does not include any special meetings.
Right, you can say we're gonna have a workshop to go through this process and.
Yeah. But anytime you can do that without, they, they said that that does not include any special meetings.
So Jerry was saying if once, in three months, there was a, there were issues that would lend themselves to a workshop discussion that would.
Right, you wanna work through a bunch of different policies, you wanna talk about.
Yeah.
Whatever it is.
Budget time or whatever.
Yeah, you wanna work through workshops. I mean, we use the workshops for our budgets all the time, right?
You can schedule those whenever.
So I think it would be important not to lose that process. But then you gotta make sure if we're gonna, if we decided to workshop, we're gonna have to post it in enough time to make the paper and do all that process. So we just have to keep that in mind.
Which you can, Don, is it, it's, you should, you're supposed to do it as much in advance as possible. You can do one in one way.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to do that.
There's no way it doesn't happen. Right, no, I know, but if, if there, if you, it's all of a sudden decide, okay, we need to have a special meeting, you can do that.
Okay.
We actually can do a special meeting at any time.
Yeah.
So what's everyone's thoughts on twice?
Two and no workshop, I mean?
Yeah. Workshops just on a need basis.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that, too.
Mr. Swingly? I'd usually like to get your advice.
Um, the, I was looking up some of the town, I was looking up your, your question, the town does have two workshops.
I do.
It, meetings are first and third, workshops are second and fourth Thursdays, and it's at five thirty for the workshops, but if the question was about workshops, I think the workshops are, are important. I felt, you know, obviously everything.
Everything.
You never really know a lot of things, I think the workshops are an important aspect of, of the board. I mean, there, sometimes there's not a lot of stuff and then, you know, an audible's called and the workshop's canceled, but I think having a regularly scheduled workshop is a target to, if you have agenda items to put up or things to, to talk about, at least can be introduced and the board can start thinking about it before the next regular scheduled meeting, too, so.
So what if, what if we don't act it right away? Cause that's going from one extreme to another, what if we did it every other month?
Well, there's nothing that says that you can't vote on things at a workshop.
No, no, I understand.
You can still have a workshop and vote on things.
Understand.
So it's, I think it would still be okay to do a workshop and a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That's just something you guys have chose to do.
So you're suggesting a workshop and one meeting?
Yeah.
Sort of total two?
Yeah.
As opposed to two meetings and a workshop as needed?
Yeah, a workshop.
That will work for bills and everything, that's not gonna work.
And it, and one of the things we were just discussing, too, is the cellular stuff, the five G, their shot clocks, and I think the, part of that code, put it back onto the Village Board to make decisions on that, and there's timeframes that have to be met with those, with those things, I think, isn't there?
Mm-hmm.
I think we keep it to two, I think we keep two meetings and then if we wanna make the, the workshop.
On a need basis.
On a need basis, or move it to, right now it's once a month, let's move it to every other month, and at least you have opportunities to put things on the agenda, you can write things down, hey, well, we meet next month, I wanna work through this.
I mean, budget time, you might wanna have a workshop more than.
Right, which way things.
Yeah, we can call it.
August or whatever.
We extended hours, too, through the budget process, so.
Yeah.
Or like in the summer, one person noted that they only need one in the summer, that you might need to need less, whatever your need is.
We did cancel more than we normally have this past year just because the agenda had nothing on it, so. So if the need is there, we increase it.
Wondering some of the months.
Okay.
So we're, we're standing at two meetings and a workshop, one needed.
That's what you guys all agree on? Or every other month, if you want, wanna keep that.
We'll start with that.
Every other month?
Yeah.
What do you think?
Every other month?
You like that, or you just wanna probably add a new?
Well, I think it's fine right now. I don't know what will happen in February, March. I mean, obviously that would be as needed most likely. So why don't we stay, why don't we go with every other month and then as needed? Cause I think in budget time, we're going to.
Capitalize.
Two meetings, workshop every other month?
Mm-hmm.
And then as needed after that. I'll give them that.
And we'll put it on the agenda. Thank you.
So now the next thing's the time. So you're telling us six o'clock for a workshop?
Like just the workshop.
So what's everyone's thoughts on that?
I'm good with this.
I do nine, six, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, six, okay.
Thank you.
Six, 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 sale?
I'm a number no matter what I say, so.
All right. We'd like your concern.
I think six is fine.
It's every other month, so.
They'll hold us there.
Normal means, so.
Cause Don likes to go home first and have dinner.
Sold. Yeah.
Okay.
We'll vote on that.
Six can.
Yeah, I think you gotta vote on that, don't you?
She said the meeting schedule of your organization.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll put it over.
So that would have to be something that would, that would think come out.
Could have to ask for a motion to change the board, or that workshops every month at time of six o'clock, and then two board meetings.
I'll make that motion.
Do you wanna do it, then?
You can, or you can just wait till.
No.
I just noticed this is better. I wanna kill our guests.
He gets that on his head.
Right.
Yeah, this one.
I don't need it.
He's gonna be the mayor of the board. Good, yeah.
Four on three, man.
All right.
So one came a.
The one that doesn't work?
Motion to move through two board meetings a month with a workshop every other month starting this month.
And then as needed.
And then as needed.
Time change.
Time change, board meetings, summary will start at seven, workshop will start at six.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alita?
Aye.
Trustee Guckey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
The next workshop's in January, then.
Off your bitch, your foot.
I think I have a set. Must've been a coffee.
Yeah.
Sure.
I wouldn't know.
I look downstairs to see if there's a cake up for you, I couldn't find one, so.
Okay. Next, we have a discussion on policy and annual updates. I agree that there are two, or are there more? There are at least two that we were going to discuss. First one, I believe, is the.
Why are we going down this agendas?
Are we?
Well, no, I'm just, typically when we have a speech or a guest, I think it's.
He doesn't wanna sit through this.
Sit here, typically we go.
That was in, that was the, the original one. Why didn't we keep the original?
Hey, I'm sorry, I'm just pointing out that we should let our guests jump on the agenda and then we can.
Yeah, I don't know why that's.
The original agenda, sorry, Gary. It was the original one, I was ready to go.
Sitting there in pain?
No, I'm not in pain, I'm fine.
You're not fine, Gary.
So I'll, I'll take the opportunity, cause then I, then I could go home and have supper.
There you go.
All right, if you could just take one of those and pass that down, I'm gonna just briefly go over this. I did bring you a written document and, so first, I just wanna give you some rundown on it. As you know, the trustees appointed a committee, Village Sewer Treatment Plan Advisory Committee, and I was asked if I would facilitate, and then ended up being chair as well on this committee, so I prepared, I prepared this report. This report was sent out to all of the committee members, and each of the committee members had an opportunity to comment on it, and they each have, and so I just wanna give you the rundown. Charlie Conrose, Bill Stata, Paul Schible, Greg Chambry, Marcus Lathrop from Xerox, Jimmy Guck, and Bill Horith were all members of this committee. The committee did meet on three occasions, and the majority of the committee members were present at each meeting. The engineering studies performed by both the engineering firms were distributed to all the committee members in their entirety, and the village study engineering firm was represented at all three members. The joint study engineering firm was not represented. Jake Swingly, John Carnavale, and Marcia Adams were present at all three meetings, and trustee Jude Lancy was present at two of the three meetings. Minutes for each meeting were prepared, and I believe that you have been sent all of those. So the committee did receive extensive input from Jake in PowerPoint presentations and verbally in all three meetings. That input focused on areas identified by Jake as areas of concern and unanswered questions. He also discussed his objectives to the fundamentals of combining the engineering data from the two studies into one apples-to-apples comparison. There was a significant focus on the user cost estimates page of the Barton and Ladue presentation that was made to the trustees on August twenty second. Clem Chung from Mobella was told the committee that he was in agreement with those numbers in the apples-to-apples comparison as prepared, but noted that there is a difference in the two methodologies used by the two firms, and that neither approach is either inherently wrong or inaccurate. Committee members were polled and asked to share their perspective, concerns, and priorities. Each member expressed concerns about current costs and future costs. Xerox did express concerns regarding current permitting and materials handling in place with the village now that would need to be addressed if a change in plants, if the town is able to, or will be able to handle those capabilities. There was a brief discussion about an underlying feeling that a merger of the plants would be one more step in the direction of dissolving the village. This was addressed by me, that if the committee member was, members were in opposition solely on that belief, then the committee was wasting everybody's time, and I think that that kinda got quietly put away pretty quickly. Committee topics also included energy efficiencies and the differences between the plant's operations that create differences in, differences in energy use. The lack of redundancy at the village plant was discussed, as was the potential of it becoming a requirement in the future, as the village's current redundant facility located at Phillips Road is not operational. Village debt levels were also discussed, as was the five hundred thousand dollar transfer loan to community village funds for the previous emergency plant repair. The topic of the collection system and the village current debt in the context of transferring either or both to the town was discussed. It's not known to the committee if that could or would be able to happen, and what if any legal restrictions may come into play. How existing debt and collection system expenses would impact the overall cost to the village users was also an unknown. The unpredictability of the projected future upgrade and repair costs, and the availability of future low or no-cost borrowing, and the future availability of grants was discussed. Because currently available grants are not included in the user cost estimates, it's difficult to estimate their current year and future year impact on rates. Xerox flow volume was a topic, and the Xerox representative present indicated that they had not been informed of any current or future plans that would reduce flow to the village's plant, but that representative also indicated that consolidation within the campus is taking place to make more efficient use of space costs, which is resulting in buildings becoming unused as operations are moved to other buildings. That consolidation presents an opportunity for business growth outside of strictly Xerox operations, potentially increasing volume at the Village of Webster Treatment Facility. Xerox volume makes up about half of the volume to the village's plant. Based on Xerox representative's input at the time of the Barton evaluations, Xerox indicated that it did not foresee any increase in flows from their facility, and in developing that regional alternative, the twenty-year planning period was included in the design basis. Flows and load contribution from the village, including the current Xerox flows, were based on the village P E R and assumed a four percent growth, including Xerox. Future growth in the village is largely limited by additional development footprint, and the flow and loads from the town portion was assumed to increase by an average of point seven five per year over twenty years, equivalent to a long-term increase in town contribution of sixteen percent. Given the future growth assumptions, the regional alternative would then have a monthly average capacity of around nine point seven million gallons per day. That's just flow, it doesn't talk about load. Town is currently processing around three point nine eight million gallons a day, and the village is approximately one point three nine. Combined, they would be about five point three nine. So that, the purpose of that discussion was basically to ally some of the question about whether or not a regional plant would be able to handle any increased flow from Xerox, and it would be able to, given the fact that that regional plant would be designed in such a way that it could take increased flow to current flow, it would be roughly at about fifty-five percent of what its capacity would be if the regional approach were taken. So the current village E D U rates were discussed, as was the rate change from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty made by the village for two thousand and nineteen. How village rates would be calculated into the future was discussed, if the village maintained the collection system and had to service the existing debt. The likely understanding would be that there would be a rate for the treatment at the town plant and a second rate to cover debt and collection costs. It was noted that rates are established by the trustees and the town board and are not established by any set required formula. Philosophical differences between the boards could result in differences in setting rates. One board may wish to calculate an amount based on future needs into the current rate, setting aside money into the future, and another board may say, we're gonna wait and spend that money into the future, we'll bond it into the future, the entire amounts. So the summary and the conclusion first is that the committee would like to thank the village trustees for the opportunity to look at the village sewage treatment plant situation and suggest the path forward. The diversity in the group led to healthy discussions and good observations about the current situation. The advisory committee was assisted with the presence of a lot of engineering expertise and was able to gain a decent understanding at a high level of the engineering aspects of keeping the village's plant versus moving to a regional model. Through this exercise, there was a general recognition that there are quite a few unknowns that go along with flow volume and plant requirements. Committee recognized that no amount of research would be able to accurately predict things like the future of the Xerox campus, new environmental regulations for municipal treatment plants, potential state grants for these types of projects. These are just a couple of the examples of the unknown, and there are plenty of others that were discussed. Once this part of the exercise was completed, it became very apparent to the group that there was insufficient information to be able to assess the tactical and financial implications to the village moving forward with a regional approach. A lot of data and numbers were available about the village scenario, but there was no regional deal to be able to evaluate against staying with a village approach. There are many transitional factors and activities in a regional approach. Large components of making a regional deal with the town have not been negotiated, and if they have been, they were not made aware to the committee. There was some talk in the group and speculation on what would happen if nothing concrete with regard to assumption of debt, collection of fees, payment for infrastructure care and maintenance of the village collection system, closing the village plant, disposition of village employees working in the plant, et cetera. In essence, there is nothing at this point that describes the roles and responsibilities of a regional treatment compared to the existing village treatment. Without the specifics of what the regional treatment approach would look like, the consensus of the committee was that it is not able to make a recommendation to the trustees about moving forward or not moving forward with a combined sewage treatment approach. The committee does, however, recommend that the village trustees reach out to the town board and ask for a joint committee of trustees and town board members to meet and develop a proposal or model of how a merged treatment system would look for the town and the village. This model would need to be developed and agreed upon by both municipalities. That committee would need to address the several items in the discussion above, such as the debt, the collection system, the rate calculation methodology, et cetera. Once that proposal or model was established and evaluated, the impact on the current and future village users might be more easily determined. It's also recognized that no amount of study will be able to accurately predict the future and its moving variables, so we would be happy to elaborate on any of those points in this report and look forward to an eventual decision in this matter. So I'll answer any questions about the committee's work, and then I do have one topic that I wanna bring up that came up, to came to light after the report was put together, but I just wanna bring to your attention, so. Are there any questions?
I don't have any particular questions, I just wanted to say thank you to you for presenting this, putting it together, and Jake and Jude and others that were on that team, Marcia, so I appreciate the work that you guys did.
It was, we did come, we, we crammed a lot into, into three meetings. We got a lot, we got a lot of information. We were assisted by Clem or his people were there at every meeting, so we had that, we had that ability. It was, it was very difficult to look at this versus this when we didn't know what this looked like, and so that's why the committee's recommendation would be that it really, I think that we gotta kinda maybe develop a model with the town and say, what would it look like? And so that'll bring me, if there's no other questions, dude, Carl, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, I, you know, we've already had our engineering study by Clem and Mobella and Barton, and what you're suggesting appears to me that we wanna start that process all over again and see what it looks like. We've already been told what it looks like.
I wouldn't say that that was what the, I wouldn't say that that's what the recommendation of the committee is. I think the committee has said you have an engineering study, you have multiple engineering evaluations as to what has to happen at the plant and the village. The town's regional approach has been developed by the engineers, they've done some preliminary work as to what the cost estimates would be, the user estimates would be. I don't think that it's their intent to say you need to go back to an engineering groundwork. I think what it is their intent is that the trustees need to meet with the board, with the town board, and you need to decide on certain things, like where are we gonna go with the collection system? What are the opportunities with the debt? Can the debt be transferred? Legally, can that happen? Can it, and if it does, what does it look like? How would the billing look like for village users into the future? Would there be a bill for the, for the collection and maintenance of the collection system and then a bill for the treatment? How would that look and what, what would those estimated costs be? I think the data is there, I just think it needs to be determined as to what's gonna be acceptable to the town board and what's gonna be acceptable to the trustees. I could comment on several of those things, you know, based on looking at all of this information independently, and as everybody at this, in this room knows, and if you don't know, I don't have, I don't have a dog in this race. I'm not a town resident and I'm not a village resident, and so for me to look at it as best as I'm able objectively, the only other piece that I would like to bring up is the, the concern that I have as the committee chair in that the recommendation to move forward with, sitting down with the town and saying, what would we actually do? Where would we go? Now, I know that there are some components that have already been discussed, but I think you gotta figure out the rest of them, and then you need to maybe go get some legal counsel to say, that's a great idea, but you can't do it. The law doesn't let you transfer debt, or you can't create a this or a that, or whatever would have to come that you guys negotiated as trustees and board members. And then moving forward from that, then I think you would have an opportunity to say, this is a good thing for the village users, the village residents, the village taxpayers, or maybe we're better off staying with ourselves. The only comment that I would like to make that came up after this report was written, and I would have included it had I, I had that information prior to writing the report[1721.94] prior to writing the report and sending out to the committee members, is that it appears to me that time has become of the essence. It appears to me that the town is very rapidly approaching the point in time where they need to make a decision as to whether or not they're going to complete out a regional plant or whether they're going to continue with operations to handle what they need to handle as far as the town is concerned. I don't think it was their intent to always prepare at a regional basis because that would really be overbuild capacity. If they had the flow from the Village, they have the capability, the engineering studies are done, they have the ability to do that, it would move forward in that direction. But I do think that there's gonna come a point in time, and I believe that it's gonna happen more quickly than I originally anticipated, that the town's gonna have to make a decision. And if the town makes a decision that we don't know what the Village wants to do, we need to move forward. You know, I look at it in the picture of, you know, you're building a house. There comes a point in time when it's time to put the roof on. And if we're gonna put the roof on, we're gonna do it, or we're not gonna do it. But we're gonna have to move forward and so I'm afraid that the window may close on this opportunity for the Village if a decision is not made or a negotiation isn't set in play. So, I guess my thought for that is, is that I don't think it would be a wise thing for you to say, let's meet in January or February and see what we can work out. I think we should meet soon, relatively quickly with the town board and say, what would it look like? What's the picture gonna look like? And then, once you've got that, I think you'll have a much better understanding of what it's gonna look like for users. Now, in, I think the studies call it year one, or, and then what's it gonna look like twenty years from now?
Right, and I agree with you, what was presented to us and I believe both engineers stood up here and said, what was shown to the residents, shown to us, was best, or worst-case scenario up there in the screen without all the information, all the grants in it. They went about it different ways, but they got to the same, same spot. So, the other thing that you're talking about or things that Jake, Jake brings up, there's a lot of internal things that the Village has to figure out that the town will have nothing to do with. Oh, who's gonna counter snowplowing, who's gonna do those things? That's something that we need to talk about. Hey, hey, if we went this way, how, how do we figure that out? So, those are things we have to do. And then there's, there's things around collections, how we bill. We have to discuss those, you know, with the town and say, which way it is gonna go and we have to come up with it. So, I agree, I agree with that.
I do think that there are some things that, once you've come up with an idea, I think that there may be some legal restrictions and there may be some structural differences between the town and-
Well, that's where I was gonna go to Don, because I don't think we can all meet as two boards.
Can we, I know we tried to do that before.
No, sure you can. It's gotta be a public meeting, it's gotta be, I don't know, an open meeting, but sure you can meet. Done that.
And I don't know if necessarily the committee was saying that the entire, both entire boards needed to meet or whether they could just send representatives, a couple of trustees and a couple of town council people and sit down and say, this is where we think, you know, I think each, each board has got a general idea of where they would like to go. But I do think that there, there are two, the two biggest pieces that I see that I think the committee, you know, was stuck on a little bit was the collection system and the debt. And I think there are some legal restrictions on the debt and the collection system. Quite frankly, from a personal standpoint, this wasn't wholly discussed as a committee. But the vision that I, you know, the town does not have a townwide district, they have districts. So, I'm not sure that there would be a whole lot of difference if the town took over the collection system, wouldn't it really just become a sewer district within the town, which would be responsible for its pipes and its maintenance and its costs?
In fairness, I, I believe the town has a townwide district and they take on capital, their district, if there's an expansion of the system, they set up a district, I think, to pay for that capital improvement for, if they run sewers where there is no sewers. But as far as collection and treatment, I think that's all a townwide, townwide district.
And that's one of those pieces that we couldn't answer as a committee, to say, how would it look like? And what would it look like into the future? And what would you need to have staff-wise if the collection system becomes part of a town district? Could it be, you know, there's lots of open questions and I think that having a meeting between the town and the, uh, the town and the Village boards, the Village trustees, I think that would be the, a good next step. The committee feels that that would be a good next step for you guys to do that and to sit down. And if you can come up with a model and say, these are the things that we now know for sure, this is what collection would look like, this is what debt would look like, and this is what billing would look like into the future, then I think you could say, alright, this makes sense for the Village, or this doesn't make sense for the Village to move forward. My only point that I would, you know, I just don't think that that process can go on for another six months. I'm not even sure that it can go on for another three months. You know, the, the, construction is underway. If you've not been down Phillips Road, they're, they're well underway. That plant is being modified and it's underway and there's gonna come a day in time when they're gonna say, are you on? And you're gonna have to say yea or nay. And if you say nay, then that window closes and they're gonna, you know, they're gonna complete their plan. So, any other questions for me?
I just, in regards to that, there's currently doing construction on phase one, which is the secondary clarifiers. The primary, if I'm, and probably more familiar, the primary clarifiers and the digester are the only components, but that would be in phase two, they'd still have to go out to bid and still have to decide. And the only difference is the going from a forty-two foot to a fifty-foot digester. The other things are components that could be added on, it's three to four, right, there's primaries.
My question, and I don't know if you can answer this or not, but you mentioned that it came to your attention that there is more urgency, time is at the essence. Was that something that came from the town itself? Or was that other, were there other sources for that?
It came from the town and from the town's engineers.
Okay, because as Jake was mentioning, when the town's engineers had presented the way that they had constructed their project and set up their project, they tried to build in as much flexibility as they could, knowing that this question about whether the Village would join, wouldn't join, was on the table. So, I believe phase one can, I mean, is under construction, it can proceed and will proceed without the Village being part of that. The question is for the next pieces, how critical are those components to the town's own operations? Because there are certain things that will need to be done. For example, taking out the clarifier that's currently dedicated to the Village and then replacing that with a chlorine contact tank to get additional chlorine contact time. Whether that's necessary just for the town's own purposes or whether it's necessary as part of the regional alternative and not necessarily just for the town. So, I don't know, I don't really, you know, I don't wanna speak for their engineer.
Right, and I'm sure, I'm not talking any engineering talk, that's not gonna come out of my mouth. But I am, I am sure that people would be able to explain where their concerns are.
Okay.
And, and the timeframe for that. The impression that I got in the discussions that I had after our last meeting, following up on some earlier requests from the committee to get some information from the town, was that we're, we're coming up on that point. And, you know, the first, your first study is two years old now, we've been looking at this for a little while. And I don't know the exact timing and I don't know the exact steps of when exactly that drop, that date would be. But I think that when you guys meet for the first time with the town board, it's not gonna be something that's gonna be resolved in fifteen minutes. I think there's gonna have to be discussions and what would this look like and come back and ask Jake questions. And then, they're gonna have to go back and ask their engineers questions, you're gonna have to ask your engineers questions and I think that that process is gonna take some time.
Seems like you didn't have some of the answers that were answered. There was some, some meetings, so around collections, debt and stuff like that, employees, those were answered by the town. And Judy was a part of those meetings, so I'm not sure why she didn't share that, that information, but those, those questions were answered.
The one thing, the other that I can think maybe why the town is anxious about it is every phase of the project they're gonna go through, they need to apply for funding just like the Village does. So, there are certain windows that they have to apply for, to apply for that assistance, just like the Village would.
I didn't get, I, I didn't get specifics as to what it was. I'm sure that if the trustees reached out to the town board, that they would probably get an idea of what kind of timeframe they're wanting, they're wanting to work in. I mean, it is their project and, you know, they can move forward.
Were they present at your committee meetings?
No.
Why not?
To, at one point, I believe Jake reached out to the plant operator at the town. They, he was not initially invited. The committee asked to have him come for input. And his response to that was, is that he had not been directed by the town board, nor had the town board been asked for representation. In fact, the town board felt that the trustees had made it, in the discussion of the trustees meeting, had made a very strong suggestion that the town not be included in that process. So, that was as part of, that was part of a discussion that took place at one of the trustees meetings and I happened to go back and look at that tape and that was in fact, what happened was is the comment was, maybe we don't want the town there, we want the Village to look at this and see where it can go. So, that's why the town did not participate. When he was approached, he said he would not attend and then he said he would attend, but he wouldn't be able to answer any questions because he wasn't officially asked to be the representative of the town. The town board did not said to him, go represent us as a town board to that committee. And because that was never solicited by the trustees. Anything else for me?
I think I'm set thoroughly there.
Thanks for your time.
I appreciate it.
Well done there. I, one final thing, just to clarify your summary and the, and the committee's and thank you for all the time that you and everyone else spent on that. The recommendation that summarizes is get the other, see what, you know, how you share what the final things would look like and then decide, not decide that you're gonna do it and then work out the details afterwards. It's figure out the details and then see if it's a good idea.
Well, I think that's the consensus of the committee is, is that you really don't have enough information to say, proceed or don't proceed, until you know what the model looks like. I mean, it, it kinda makes sense, you're not gonna walk into that, but.
It's, it's not true, Jake.
It's, I contribute to Jake.
The Village wouldn't be committed to anything until, until, until a memorandum of understanding was signed. And that happens at the tail end of this joint committee.
Right, but the discussion was, we should let them know whether we're doing it or not and then work out the details. That's exactly what was said.
Compared to like a union contract or a merger. So, you, if you're, if, if we look at the basic things, because there's so many unknowns and we say, yeah, things that, and we're leaning towards going that way, then we still need to have a contract and an agreement. So, let's say, hey, we're, we're willing to jump on board and do a joint, but we gotta work through all these things. And if we don't get some wins, we're not signing nothing, then we're back to the drawing room.
I misunderstood.
That's what I know.
I misunderstood, because that's the exact question I asked, is so at the end, if we decide it's not a good idea, then we don't do it? No, we, we, we don't do it, but we still, no, we still do it, we still do it, but.
No, we can, if, if we don't get any wins for the Village, yeah, I think we can stop at some point. So, I'm sorry, wasn't like, that's how I didn't explain it. But yeah, I think there's gotta be wins, it's not just one way, I agree with you. It's gotta be wins for both, but, but if we're deciding to move forward with it, in, in principle, we still have to sign a contract of that. And then you look across the room at the town board and say, listen, nothing we asked for or wanted is in favor of this Village, I'm not signing this. That's how I kinda listen.
And you have another component there too, is you currently have an I M A, right? Is that what they call it, I M As in your municipal agreements? You currently have an I M A that obligates the Village to certain things with that town plant. There would probably be a new I M A at some point in time, so that that would be a part of that negotiation as well. What's that gonna look like? What are those requirements gonna be? Anything else for me? You got, you got a handful of work on this one. But I really do think that the committee was wise in their assumption that you really, you need to come up with an idea and I don't think you can do that without town participation. I think you need to have the town, the town people, the town board and their input to say, this would work for us, this would not work for us. And then, as you said, Jerry, okay, if it doesn't work for the Village, it doesn't work for the Village, then, you know, let's not move any further, any further forward. Alright, anything else for me? Thank you, thanks for letting me, thank you for moving me up on the agenda, I appreciate that. Good night, yep. Thank you. They need to do that, absolutely.
Well, do you wanna, since you're the mayor, sir, do you wanna reach out to the town supervisor in this discussion? Or do you want me to reach out to the?
The discussion?
Well, well.
I'll ask whether or not the boards can.
Well, we just have to share some of this information. So, again, it's gotta be cooperation, obviously, from the town. They, you're at the point, well, you know, you have all the data, we have all the data, so let's make the decision. So, we're saying, we don't have all the data or all the questions answered. So, they're gonna need, first of all, they're gonna need to willingly have to sit down with us. If they're not, then we're sitting here like this, so.
I think that there needs to be more detail.
Right, but before Heather just sends a calendar invite, I think it would be appropriate for you, for me or somebody to call them to say, what are your thoughts? I mean, I think it's a better partnership than them just receiving an email, a ca- a calendar, so we can, they can understand what we're trying to get at. Because if, if this board's not willing to give them the answers with all these questions unknown and we need the questions answered by a joint partnership or meetings, then we need to, so I, I'll take that on if you'd like me to. I'm just asking if you'd rather do it.
I think we can discuss and sit down, maybe in terms of what it would look like, the kind of decision it would look like, if you wanna, you've had more contact with.
Well, I know I took initial questions from this group, which Barry said that they didn't have answers to, collections, debt and all that, which is not, that's not a true statement because they did answer those. And Judy was one that was with me in that meeting at the time. So, we did get some of those answers. There's a bunch of other questions that Jake has that we did get answers from. So, I agree, there's still more information to get, but some of those questions, questions that Barry answered, well, we did get answers on.
In fairness, she did say that that was her understanding is that they, the town said they would not take the debt, they didn't want the collection system and their personnel, they would find, find room for it at the town. So, that, that was shared, wasn't, you know, a hundred percent, you know, elaborator wasn't a hundred percent certain that, hey, you know, we didn't get an absolute no one writing that, no, we will not take your-
Correct, it's all conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are things that need to be.
Yeah, that's really.
Yeah, those, and how, how the debt's structured, if you look at the, the last thing that B N L came up with. And, let me, I, I'm working for the Village residents, right? And I'm gonna be a pain in the butt and I know it and I look at way too much detail and overthink stuff, but it's on behalf of somebody else. But I think it's important to have, we, we have to, to be able to have you guys make a good decision and have those questions answered. And how is it gonna be set up? How can it be set up? If we're, are we taking two entities and making one, or are we taking, with us still having a collection system, that almost creates three entities. Just simple things, for example, the town's collection system budget, B N L's last report, their collection system budget's about five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. But all their employee benefits are still on their O and M and treatment budget. So, you'd have to make sure, because those are different subset of users. I don't think that the Village residents would pay for health insurance for someone that only works in the collection system. And I don't think the town would intend it for us, but that's gotta be discussed and see how that, how the, the, the system would be formed if there was a regional treatment. If that's better for our Village customers, I'm all for it. But we don't know if it's better or not because we don't know what we don't know even, you know? How, how would that be set up? Well, how's it, how's it have to be set up legally? You know, in, in the laws, I don't think you can intermingle funds between different subsets of users and, and different districts. I, maybe you can, maybe I'm all wet, but I think we have to ask the questions. You know, and, and determine things like that, because that's a huge chunk of change. Their benefits are about five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And if forty percent, sixty percent of their workforce works in the collection system, sixty percent of five hundred thousand, five hundred and sixty thousand is a pretty good chunk of change. They ought to get moved to collection system out of O and M, you know, for those benefits. And that changes the numbers a bit. And that's why I still contend that the year one numbers aren't year one. It's, it might be year one in theory, but in practice, how is it gonna affect our, or what would the true cost to our Village users be? And I think that's the important thing to get to, is what would the true cost to our Village users be actual? You know, and here's the thing, you know, so. But I appreciate it.
I think that highlights why a meeting with the town is needed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because they can only answer that question. Because if, in fact, you're right, if in fact they're, they've got all the benefits tied into the sewage treatment plant and not the collection system, that's not fair.
Right.
You're gonna have to somehow back that out again and change it.
And they're just like us, those, those people work back and forth between the collection system, between the plant. So, you'd have to allocate or come up with a, hey, eighty percent of their times in the collection system, twenties in the plant. You don't have to sit there and mark down every fifteen minutes, well, he went over here and then he left and, you know, because that would cost more than, than to track it than it would. But somehow, it's gotta be discussed and, and thought about, I guess, you know?
I guess it, it depends. You could, what if, what if, you know, the, the, the town doesn't wanna physically own the collection system? They don't wanna own the pipes and stuff. So, what if the Village contracted out maintenance of the collection system to the town? So, now the town employees are in charge of both collection systems, except for capital costs. And then your, your problem isn't really a problem.
No, then you, then you've got kind of a townwide system.
Right.
Except for, yeah, this capital or all capital and it would just be the location where it's at, you know?
So, that might be a way to solve that issue. But again, you don't know, you know, until you talk to them and see if they're willing to do that.
And half of it is, like you said, we don't know, we don't know yet, right?
But then there are certain internal things that I don't know if you've got in this board that, you know, what's, like the snowplowing, the things that the, those, the three people at the plant do. And if they're not around, you gotta hire somebody or, you know, what's the cost for that? They gotta, that's gonna affect- They gotta, that's gonna affect the general fund.
Yeah.
So you gotta look at both, both the overall costs of village residents, including what's the rate, the rate's gonna be, the rent's gonna be on. What impact there might be on the general fund. So you need to, I would think, if you develop a.
I gave him a brainwash to Marsha, and she's still here, so it wasn't as bad as I thought, but yeah, he can do.
A list of those kinda things.
Yeah, actually.
And what are the costs, what are the potential costs, depending on which way you go.
Call somebody and see what he's willing. Then I gotta call him, and it's not, it'll be someone else.
So there would be, you know, maybe Ryan and Barry and Daryl. So is the floor?
So the understanding is that we need to get, get everybody down and discuss with them.
Questions, Jake, stop being mad at me.
So you're you're gonna call tomorrow?
Who's calling?
Jerry.
Place one.
Jerry.
Callers.
Yeah.
We don't know if he had.
You in there?
We don't know if he did, so it would be in the clear.
I don't even know what you're getting to.
He said his voice was fine, he had that tree was so funny.
Lemon, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is that eating? Yeah? When the polls close again.
I know, it's.
You know, my pizza.
I don't know, it's kinda your shame.
So let's just go to our discussion of the.
You've got another one. You're missing the policy.
Policy number four.
No, it's number two.
Send the results.
What?
You wanna go to policy?
No, no, you're the boss.
Why do they all change?
Just for mayor.
She's got a boss.
So you wanna be here for the policy? So we'll talk now about discussion on these uh, policy manual updates. Uh, first one is, I believe, well, there are two of them here that we have in front of us, and that is. Eight-four, which is weekend duty. Eligible employee who is required to work weekend duty shall be compensated with four hours of compensatory time for each day of duty. For example, a weekend duty shift would earn an employee eight hours of compensatory time. A weekend duty shift is Monday or Friday holiday would earn credit for the employee of twelve hours compensatory time. Weekend duty begins at the end of the shift on the last day of the work week, of work for the week, and ends the beginning of the shift on the first day of the work the following week. Any non-union employee not eligible for compensatory time shall receive fifty dollars a day for weekend duty. A village clerk, treasurer, and superintendent of works are considered exempt employees not subject to overtime or compensatory provisions. My question, I guess, regarding this, and I I'm not sure the question to follow, but in terms of change. What about Will as um, the code enforcement officer? Is he included in this, considered exempt employees not subject to overtime or compensatory provisions?
No, Will has weekend duty, he gets fifty dollars a day in the weekend duty.
So what is weekend?
What is it?
It's basically from the end of the day, the end of the workday Friday until the start of the workday Monday. You're responsible for the after-hours calls go to you. You're responsible for responding to any emergencies or any after-hour calls responding, you know, or answering those calls or responding to emergencies and taking care of it or calling somebody in, um, take care of it. You potentially have to be available, you know, twenty-four seven for those, you know, for the entire, well, actually, more than twenty. I guess twenty-four seven for Saturday and Sunday, but then eight hours on uh, on Friday, and then eight hours sixty on Monday morning as well. So, you know, you've got, right, twenty-four, forty-eight, and sixteen.
Somewhere around there.
Yeah, like sixty something hours or sixty hours or so, you're responsible for, oh, everything. You're the, if somebody calls into the village on the after-hours call, that's, he's gotta, that person's gotta respond and take care of it or get the. Get either get people called in or just take care of the issue.
Does the code enforcement officer also get overtime if he's over the hours for that week?
I don't know how.
Cause he's hourly?
I don't know how that works, I don't do his paycheck, so if he gets called in, I don't know if he gets overtime or if he gets, comes in late. Yeah, or he's, yeah, he's a mix, I guess.
So typically, an hourly staff that's on any sort of on-call would receive some sort of.
Overtime, yeah.
Well, yeah, overtime, overtime for actual hours worked, but I, our policies are pretty much, if you're called in on a non-working day, you would get paid, automatically get paid four hours.
Yeah, that's.
But they have a ten-dollar called Bieber pay. But anyone who is a salary supervisor manager, you know, that's just part of being a salary manager, but for an hourly employee, you typically have to do some sort of.
So Will is structured at hourly?
I'd be willing to bet that he probably gets, if if he's over his thirty-five hours, I'd be willing, I I think he probably would get overtime in addition to that.
You show you overtime for physical work, it's a four to forty hours of physical work or eighty hours of overtime. It's not being on-call, which is overtime, it is physical work.
If he has to come in, you know, then.
It depends, dude, I I think it's a law, if he comes in on a non-working day, he has to, it's minimum three hours, isn't it?
No, it's it's time, actual time work, so if he comes, it's an hour minimum or actual time work. So if he's here for an hour and a half, he would put in for an hour and a half, if he's here for forty-five minutes, he puts in, he would put in an hour. But yeah, a lot of municipalities do that, that four-hour minimum, and honestly, I'm not a huge, you know, huge.
Yeah, and that's. It's kinda dictated for us by the state, the way they do it. Yeah?
So how does how does Will do this on Sunday?
You get a call, you're a big four hour.
Jake?
Yeah.
What's that?
How does he do it on Sundays? I'm, I'm sorry, what do you mean?
Has his phone.
If Will, he's got his phone on, but his phone goes off at nine-thirty in the morning, and he's.
Yeah, then I.
Sitting there in service, he's not going to.
Yeah, if if Will's on like that, I would be number two, so after the phone went to him, it's dials every two minutes. It's usually not enough time to dial into the village and listen to the message before it calls out.
Yeah.
But it's, it does it for like ten minutes, it's five times in ten minutes, and then it skips to the next person. I think it still continues to call the first person, and I'll call whoever's on number two, you know? So if I'm usually number two, and, you know, I understand when Will's got a prior commitment on on Sunday, I just ask him to put a good word in for me, and I'll watch the phone when it seems to, you know. You know, it's.
So so then, when you do it, you get the fifty dollars?
No, I get nothing.
Well, all right, this doesn't say you don't get anything.
The board's telling you not.
Cause he's salaried.
Yeah.
Well, it just says they're considered exempt employees not subject to overtime or compensatory provisions. Well, that's not the fifty dollars a day, the fifty bucks a day is not overtime nor is it comp time.
I I I read that just a little bit ago when I saw this here, and I think that, yeah, that's what the, what it says. But I know the spirit of it when they changed it was that I don't get it, so I.
Which is why I said that.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm I'm, I'm on, you know, every single, I'm on every night, except, you know, and then the weekends occasionally. So we gotta rotate through everybody.
Well, I'm not.
All right.
Well, that that's good, but this is just one reason why perhaps this policy should be reworked. Because I don't even know why the village clerk and treasurer are listed, are they ever, you ever put them on weekend duty?
No.
Has, you know, ever in the history of the village, have they ever, why, so why are they, why are they even, why are they even mentioned in the weekend duties? Other than to confuse us.
Weekend duty, I have no idea.
So we should change that.
Well, cause according to this, you would be, you would be eligible to receive that fifty dollars a day.
So would you?
Well.
Yeah, so would you.
Right.
So would Marsha.
Yep.
So that's what, that's, that's, well, that's why that that whole last sentence there needs to be, needs to be just deleted. And then if you wanna leave, any non-union employee not eligible for comp time shall receive fifty dollars, except the superintendent of public works, who shall not be entitled to the fifty dollars, or however you wanna say that.
That's not how I wanna say it, however they want. Yeah, I didn't.
Well, that gets to the next one, the 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 interplay between this snow watch and then this fifty bucks.
Who's running this meeting?
You know, so, well, but they're.
Oh, I'm just kidding.
These two things are kinda, these two things are kinda tied together. You know, and that's what's confusing in these two, you know, straighten out, figure out what's what.
The weekend duty is um, fifty-two weeks a year, obviously, it's summer, winter, whatever, that everybody's. It is, uh, when the people are on weekend duty in the wintertime, they're responsible for snow watches. Well, during those hours, they'll get up at, and, you know, and check the roads and make, they're responsible that time for calling crews and and things like that. This snow watch, this snow watch policy, they put it in effect, there was a policy when I first started here that was a little different than this. And I think the previous board and this board, or two boards, I guess, if you look at the whole makeup, it was two boards ago, changed this for the snow watch duty. And this is basically November first, April first.
So this is the policy itself right here, doesn't even have dates.
That's why, that's why.
And that's the the practice has always been, you know, not always, but since this came into play, it was November first, April first.
Right, should match your snow counter or something.
And then when I.
Should be in the policy.
So it's when I, you know, and so I, basically, I'm, you know, when I leave here, until when we have snow, people start coming in. Uh, we have one person a week comes in at three o'clock in the morning to start doing snow, and then if there's no snow, they're, you know, they're calling people in there. If there's no snow, they're doing cleaning, they're doing vehicle maintenance, things like that. Um, but they start at three and work a different shift than in December, um, or depends on the year, usually it's in December. This is November first, April first, and I get, that's what I get usually for, you know, I'm watching the roads till three o'clock every morning, so. That's what, that's always done. And then if I'm on vacation, I always try to make sure that the person that's on vacation, I don't know, there's been mixed success with that. You know, if the Clancy's watching the, watching the roads all day, every day, if I'm on vacation in the wintertime, I think he certainly should be eligible to to get the snow watch compensation. But that gets a little sticky, I hear people say, well, in the summertime, if I'm on weekend duty, you know, I just have to carry the phones and respond to calls. If we get a call, if I'm in the winter, then I gotta watch the roads and do extra stuff, and I get the same, um, you know, they, the. Plant might be, they get the same comp time, they still get the same comp time in the summer and the winter. I've offered to reduce it in the summer to make it more equitable, but that hasn't been, that hasn't been viewed favorably. So I, it's, you know, it's, it's a seasonal thing, yeah, so you're, it's, it's easier to manage, it's easier to track. I think for payroll, there's a weekend duty thing in there, here's what it is, change back and forth between, you know, you know, if you're on weekend duty in the summer, it's, you know, say, you get six hours instead, you know, three hours a day instead of four hours a day. You know, someone's basically given up, they can't go to, you know, a family function, they can't go out of town, they can't, you've gotta be here, you gotta be available, you know? Um, there's, you know, it's, it's tough, you can't, you know, you can't go out with your friends or do any of that stuff. Um, what's that? No, I don't have friends, that's why I'm on every night. So, yeah, that's what.
So the snow watch is what it means, and the first time that there has been the possibility of snow is coming up, I suppose, this weekend. So what happens if there's a week where it's sunny? I mean, there is no snow forecast, there will be no snow, what is snow watch?
Well, it's the same thing what happens when it snows April twentieth, if the policies, that's one thing that kinda set the, because there was a discussion before about providing weather reports and things like that. It could be, it, we could have a bunch of snow, and then it could be sunny for a week, and we still have to salt, because the sun melts the snow when it's running down the road or running on the sidewalk. And if we have snow piled on on the sidewalks in the business district, we still have to check that, because sun melts snow and then it refreezes again. So that's why I think that that time they set it just November first, April first, and forget the weather reports and any of that stuff, just, here's what it is. So if it snows April twentieth and we're still watching, or if it starts snowing October fifteenth, it's getting taken care of regardless. Um, but that's what they just set that, here's the parameters for it.
So so in the in the winter, if if Will is Mr. Snow Watch and he's weekend duty, he can get eighty bucks a day?
No, weekend duty, because weekend, the snow watch, the way that this is practiced, basically, the snow watch is, basically applies to me. I get it, and then if I'm off on vacation and someone else is doing what I would normally do, and it's a Monday through Thursday thing unless I have weekend duty itself. And if it doesn't, if if someone's on weekend duty, the snow watch is, in the wintertime, is part of weekend duty. That's part of your responsibilities, besides the phone, that's part of your responsibilities is to watch the roads as well, and parking lots and cycle things. So you're you're getting thirty dollars a day for five months, or is it just on the weekend? No, it's for, basically, usually Monday through Thursday unless I'm on weekend duty, and I'd get it for those weekend duty days. And that's from four o'clock in the morning till about one, two o'clock in the morning, or depending on the weather, three o'clock in the morning. So it's basically another eleven-hour shift after my regular shift of going out and watching the roads, watching the hills, calling crews in, what we need to call crews in.
Fifty dollars a day for weekend duty.
Yeah, and and, you know, put it in perspective, when I got here, it was fifty dollars a day, and then it dropped down to thirty dollars a day.
Well, how many other towns or villages are, are doing this, or no?
I don't know, I haven't heard.
None.
Huh?
None.
I.
I did, I did a survey of the.
No, this is one of those policies, you weren't sure what we were discussing, but you did, this had enough time to do a survey.
I was, this just happened.
Well. That's one thing would be nice to, when we have an agenda come out, and there's items on the agenda, it'd be wonderful to have an honest discussion about what those items are. So maybe we could get some additional information, and it shouldn't be a surprise of a meeting.
Well, when's the agenda come out?
It was, I had it Monday, or no, I had it last, last week.
And that's not enough time?
I, I, we, I asked about what the, because the agenda said, discussion policy manual updates, and I said, what, what?
But I don't think it's in the agenda?
No, they weren't, it was just the agenda.
Yeah, there's no reason.
I don't know.
There's no reason why it can't be in the agenda. Should be in the agenda, that's fine, there's no argument there.
Jake, I did tell you, that one, I called you.
Willa.
I was asked to keep it in confidence, but I called you because, and I, and I did call you, and I said, I'm sorry, this is uncomfortable, this is what's gonna be discussed.
No, I don't recall that.
We just called the phone on Friday.
I don't recall it.
We had a very nice discussion.
So what hap, is there a snow watch on a weekend?
Yes.
If I'm, if I'm doing snow watch, there is, there's snow watch bay, because you, basically, the last board said, my time's not worth anything for extra stuff. On weekend duty, I used to get weekend duty, I used to get comp time, when I started here, I get comp time for weekend duty, I get comp time if I'm in, if I come in snow plowing. I get comp time if I'm in, if I come in snow plowing, when the guys, if someone's out sick or someone's on vacation and we need extra people, I come in and snowplow. I stayed here, you know, late last week. I came in last night because the guys are out picking up the leaves and we want to make sure the leaves are picked up, and I don't want to take anybody from that. So I went to my fire meeting last night, came back up here and cleaned the room up, vacuumed the floor, moved all the chairs out of the way because it was still set up for the Weight Watchers group. And moved all the chairs out of the way, vacuumed the entire meeting room, the hallway, and swept the floor out here and the sidewalk out front, prepared for the people coming to vote today, and the front foyer.
He did.
Yeah, so, you know, there's a lot of stuff you guys probably don't see, if you want to take the, I'm not even gonna, do what you gotta do.
Drop down?
I'm, 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 this stuff, I'm directing the board right now, so, whatever.
It's happening.
Yeah.
So.
It's, it's.
So, all of the guys yesterday were involved in leaf.
Pick up. We have the guys will clean at night, but they're all picking up, they're not working at night right now, they're all picking up leaves. I'm sorry, I didn't.
They're all picking up leaves?
Yeah. No, not all picking up leaves, some of them are.
How do they do that with one leaf?
We're doing brushes.
How do you do that with one leaf truck? So you have a driver.
Yeah.
And then you have two guys following, one in the truck and one with leaves, or three guys following, so you have four.
Well, we have two trucks that operate, there's a driver for each of those trucks. Then we've got the guy that's running the boom on the back of the leaf, the leaf machine. There's someone typically in the front because the piles, especially when they get wet, or people pick them up with their lawn mowers and they're compacted and fine little things, it's like hitting a brick wall. So you have to break those up so that they get, are able to get back in dump. So there's usually someone in the front, very often he's got the leaf break upside down, jamming through the pile with the handle just to break it, try to pierce through it and break it, because you can't even kick it. One or two guys are there doing that, and everybody else is in the back. When the guy's vacuuming the things up and the other guys are cleaning up behind, if there's any trails, makes you got a guy usually behind the boom, kicking stuff back up to the boom, boom, so we can keep, you know, moving along, so as soon as that truck fills up, they disconnect. That truck pulls away to go dump, the next truck pulls in and they continue it on, and hopefully ideally, that truck's back before the other one fills back up. And then they continue on and, and pick it up, so, yeah, it takes, you know, in fact, Will was driving, Will was driving one of the trucks today. And we had, in the afternoon, we had one of the other gentlemen from the sewer, John came up and was helping him break some leaves, try to get the things, there's a ton of them, they all fell. Three dozen once, so, we're trying to make sure to provide that service to the residents and get the things picked up as, as quickly as we can. So, and they pick up a lot easier when they're dry, so if we're not getting rain, we wanna, we pick them up about four times faster dry than we can wet, so. Uh, that's why the guys came in Saturday to pick up leaves, because we, the weather report we looked at Friday afternoon, we left, Friday afternoon, we didn't stay because we hadn't, we were having a little issue with the starter and we didn't want to lose time with the starter. So I stayed Friday afternoon and replaced the starter on that and took the other starter out.
New one?
On the new one, yeah, because it sat and there was a suspect it was low voltage, so I replaced the starter and the solenoid on it. And took the other one out, we're gonna have that since it's, it's only a forty hours on that starter, forty-five hours on that starter. We're gonna replace the brushes, we've already paid for it, it's a new starter, and have that one ready to go.
I'm gonna street you that.
All of them, because we, our goal is to go around the entire village, um, once a week. We're in the new shants, um, right now, which is, at Judson, we just came out of there, Judson, Champion, all that. They're over into Phillips Village, um, that's once we get, and that's just Creaker Road, Creaker and Foster there. Uh, once they get out of that, then they're going up north, um, Muir Street and Baker Kircher, um, and then we're going, uh, you know, north to Woodstone, Woodstone usually has a ton of leaves over there, Reynolds is pretty light, and we start west again, Wilmerite, that old village, old shants, then back to New Shants, our goal is by the end of this week, we started near Curtis, uh, Monday. So our goal is by, before the end of the week, to be back over to Curtis again. So, yeah, that's, so that's what we try every single week to do on all, and we've got, you know, we had one truck. And we were planning on starting Monday, we really didn't start till Wednesday, and we had one truck below a water, uh, water pump in it. Uh, one of them all of a sudden, the, the freight place decided to stop working, so we got those things going. Started on Wednesday, Thursday, obviously, we had the big winds and the storm, we were picking up till about three o'clock on Thursday. Friday morning, we continued to pick up, but we drew a couple crews away, or a couple times we had to break away and tend to some limbs and things like that, that were down in trees that were down. So that certainly delayed us, now, like I said, we looked at the weather, this week was supposed to be rain almost every day after Tuesday night. Um, so we said, nah, let's get them on Saturday if we can get them dry, because the wind Friday was drying them out really well, so, so let's get them. Let's get them, but we only gotta pick them up once, so.
Jake, can you clarify for me, I'm trying to sort out, um, for you and for a union employee and for a non-union, what happens with snow watch and with weekend duty?
Snow watch.
I want to just, um, so, snow watch is just for you?
Basically, yeah.
And it's only for the days when you're not on weekend duty, is that correct?
No, it's for, typically, if I'm not on weekend duty, I would put in for snow watch Monday, Tuesday, like Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night. And then Friday, since someone's on weekend duty and is watching the roads, then I don't put in for snow watch.
Right.
And then Saturday, you know, really, I'm still watching the roads, but someone else's, that's the first responsibility of someone else's, so. Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, I don't put in for it, unless I'm on weekend duty, then it would be the entire time.
Right.
And then the only thing I, if asked before, and like I said, I think I've had mixed success in it, if I'm on vacation and say Clancy's a for me, he's watching the roads every single day, I think that's basically the, the thirty bucks to compensate for that extra eleven hours of responsibility and lack of sleep.
Is that how it currently is, or how you think it should be? What's, we're trying to iron out.
With the exception of. Yeah, with the exception of the, if I'm on vacation for it, that's how it is.
If you're, if you're on vacation, then Clancy, like you delegate somebody to do that and to receive that thirty dollars stipend?
And I've asked, and I think there's been mixed success, I think sometimes it's, they, it was been done, and I think other times you're told it can't, it doesn't apply.
Okay, well, all right, so, in, in any event, this policy doesn't have, doesn't say anything what really happens.
It's not a policy.
And it's, it's, it's really useless the way it's written the way. So I would suggest that it should say something like, from November first through April first, Monday through Thursday, the superintendent of public works is responsible for snow watch duty. If the superintendent of public works is not available for snow watch duty, he shall delegate that task to another department of public works employee. The compensation for snow watch duty is thirty dollars per day. Snow watch duty is part of weekend duty, therefore on weekends, only the superintendent of public works is paid for snow watch duty. Is that basically what happens?
No, because no one else really gets snow watch at all, um, but.
You're the only one that, but someone else is doing it, but they're, they're already getting compensated with comp time.
I guess, yes, it is what.
So they're, you're the only one that actually gets cash for it, you're the only one that gets cash for it on the weekend. Because it's included in weekend duty, so then the weekend duty policy kicks in for everybody else except you.
Right.
Right? So the only thing we, that should be changed on the weekend duty policy is, and they get, so they end up getting comp time if they're doing both snow watch and, if it's anybody but Will.
Right.
Right?
Their regular, their comp time, weekend duty, from Friday when we close till Monday when we open, whoever's on weekend duty basically gets four dollars per Saturday, or, excuse me, four hours per Saturday, four hours per Sunday.
Right.
And that includes all that time period, and they're responsible for snow watch in the summer, in the winter.
Gotcha.
And they don't, there's no extra for the snow watch, it's part of what you do.
So, so then, if we just, so then, the weekend duty policy is okay, except the ver, the last sentence, and then forget, we'll just delete that sentence about village clerk, treasurer, superintendent are, are considered exempt employees. Would it say, any non-union employee not eligible for compensatory time shall receive fifty dollars a day for weekend duty, except the superintendent of public works who is not compensated for weekend duty? Right?
Yeah.
All right. So.
Is that sufficiently clear about?
I'll, I'll type these up and send them out to everybody, and you guys can decide if you want to vote on them or not. So you can kick around the, the thirty bucks a day, and that's up to whether you continue that or not, or that's up to you guys, but. But at least, at least this will, will now read as what actually has been happening.
Right.
Okay. So I'll type it up and send it to you first, so, take a peek at it, Jake, just to make sure, that, you know, you don't want anything added to it.
Other than, I want to ask clarification, Jake, other than when you are not available, in other words, you've made it known, I suppose, that you have, um, a dinner you're going to or whatever, you know, on a Wednesday night or something. Uh, it's not delegated to anyone else, the time from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, because it says you're responsible for the delegation of snow watch duty, which means that you're looking to delegate it to someone as opposed to, you know, I'm delegating it to myself. I don't know.
Typically, I'm, I'm on every single night, um, during the week, you know, except for whoever's on weekend duty. Uh, if I'm out or if I'm not available, or if I know, um, not for something for dinner, I wouldn't not be there. Like when I went to NICOM, I wasn't around to respond to a customer that called up with a concern or a question. Um, so Clancy had the phones then, he was on number one, and then I think Will was number two. Uh, but typically, there's always at least two people on, there's an order that it goes through, so, um, usually Clancy's on number two. Most, most, mostly, I frankly, um, and Will is, if I'm on, then Will will be on.
Is that weekend duty you're talking about?
For, uh, just after hours on the phone, but yeah, it's like, you know, it's, it's, just, just the after hour phone.
So how do they get compensated for after hours phones?
That's, that's weekend duty, basically, but.
So weekend duty can be, other than the weekend?
Well, no.
It's always, it's always weekend, that, that's two weeks a year.
That's not what you just said.
We, 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 we monitor the phones twenty-four, so it's three hundred sixty-five days a year, so if I'm not here, I usually have the phones except for weekend duty unless I'm on weekend duty. If I don't have the phones, if I'm out, usually Will or Clancy would take the phones.
Boy, let's, let's stick to, let's stick to, I'm so confused, let's stick to what Daryl said, which was, it's not a weekend, it's a Wednesday, and you're not around at night to do snow watch.
And you delegate to Clancy.
And you have Clancy do it. So.
Does he get the?
Clancy gets the thirty dollars and you don't get the thirty dollars, and you tell somebody, like the treasurer or, or whoever does payroll, that you weren't, weren't there that Wednesday and you.
So far, I don't believe they've, they've applied, generally applied, snow watch to anyone else. Um, and usually in that, in that circumstance, we wouldn't say, hey, switch the phones over. Um, it would just be like, hey, I'm going to dinner for a couple hours, so I'll let it ring through, if I let it ring through. And then he would get the, he would get the phone and respond to it, just kind of a work back for it, hey, I've, you know, I've got a meeting.
Phones, phones have nothing to do with snow watch, snow watch, you're watching the streets for snow.
Right, so.
You're confusing me with the phones, you can't, you confuse me with picking up the, so, that's a whole, that's a, that's a.
So if he does snow watch, he has to get compensated if you get compensated, I think what's done.
If, if you go out to dinner on a Wednesday, and so you're not around to do snow watch, and you say, Clancy, can you, oh, handle my snow watch? Does that ever happen?
He should get thirty.
He gets the thirty bucks and pays Clancy the next week.
Does he get the thirty bucks, and you don't get the thirty bucks?
Typically, he wouldn't, or I wouldn't if I wasn't available, but I, I don't know if I've ever done where it's not available. If I'm, it's in the wintertime and we got snow coming or something, I'm gonna say, hey, I get tied up, you know, from here to here, I'm going to kick my kid's concert at school. I went between, you know, seven o'clock and, you know, eight o'clock, so I'm gonna watch right beforehand if something.
But if for some reason you didn't do it in the middle of the weekend a day, I think someone who takes your role should have the same value, right? They should get paid if they're doing the same thing you're doing, otherwise, they wish I'd let an employee do it and not get compensated.
But you're, what you're saying is, if, if it's only an hour or so, you guys don't bother with anybody getting bad portion of it.
Right, but you gotta, Don, you gotta make it about a policy, you can't have all this, well, if I'm an hour there, if, if Jake can't do it for a day.
You're sick, you got the flu or something.
Yeah, someone should get paid for it.
Yeah, he's, then.
That's my opinion.
You would have to go home.
What's that?
If you took vacation.
Yeah, and that's what I was discussing before.
So, so we can make it so it's from, from November first to April first, Monday through Thursday, what hours from, from after work, after work, right?
Yeah, it's, it's the snow watch?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, it's from, you know, four thirty till, till three in the morning, because then, and we have somebody, not usually November, because everybody's doing leaves still, but usually starts about like a month later. Like right now, I'm, I'm, I would watch the roads, and we're, we're expecting possibly some snow on Thursday, some cold weather and snow on Thursday. So I'm watching, depending on what the weather says, from now until eight o'clock in the morning.
So, Don, it should read superintendent or designate me, i- in my mind. So if Jake is missing an entire Wednesday and there's an on-call hourly staff, they should get paid the thirty dollars stipend.
Right, well, that's what it'll, that's what it says, if the superintendent is not available for snow watch duty. That meant, means for the whole.
A day.
Day or two days, you're on vacation or got the flu or whatever.
Well, it's not a, it's not a day, but it's, it's, it's either from four thirty i- in the afternoon until whenever everybody comes in in the morning, eight o'clock or seven thirty or whatever it is, or when you got the, when the three AM thing starts in December, it'll be till three. So if he's, if you're unavailable for that entire period of time, then you delegate it and that person gets the thirty bucks. You're just saying, that's never happened in the recent past, you can't remember ever during the week delegating that to somebody.
He may have, but they just take the phone for a few hours and Jake takes the.
It's not the phone, again, it's snow watch, don't confuse the phones. That was, that was our thing.
Well. Because during the week, during the week, nobody gets paid for the phone.
But, but a, but a, a.
They only get paid for the phones on the weekend.
You as a resident may use the phone to call to say, there's an issue with my icy road.
Correct.
So that's.
I wouldn't call, that's a bad example.
Well.
We have a street light out, or there's a branch with a branch hanging.
No, or what he's doing is if he's at dinner, he's still checking the weather on his phone.
I sit near the window.
Regardless, we, we gotta just make the policy, it's not about how it works, but how it could happen in the future. And if there's someone covering a day for Jake, they should get the same statement, especially if it's an, an important, it's hourly.
I agree.
You have to get something to hold the phone.
But Jake's just saying, if, if it's only an hour or so, they don't bother with futzing with the.
Yeah.
Splitting up the compensation.
Yeah, when I was just going to NICE, I had Clancy had the phones the first three nights because he was, you know, the first two, or two nights, because he was here while available. But that was a snow watch at the house, that was just the after hours thing, which there isn't, I don't.
Except for on the weekends, nobody, nobody gets paid for, for monitoring the phones during the week, right?
No. Right, on the weekends, they would, because they.
But not during the week, so like Clancy, when he was covering for you, he wasn't expecting to get paid for that? Because it was during the week?
Right.
If it was the weekend, he would've got the comp time.
Yeah, he would've got the comp time.
Right, okay, so that's good, so weekend duty actually is weekends only.
Three women had snow time because it didn't begin until, which is not designated here at all whatsoever, uh, prior to November first.
Well, right, that's why, that's why we're gonna change, that's why we're gonna change that, to make it specific. November one to April one, Monday through Thursday, four thirty PM until either three AM or whenever the morning shift starts. The superintendent, the superintendent of DBW is, is responsible for snow watch duty.
Which is the only reason this got brought up, iron it out and make sure it's clear.
Right, because just reading the way it is now, it's, it's, it's totally confusing.
I agree.
Because you can't, you can't delegate to yourself something.
Unless it's done by email.
Unless it's done by sending emails to yourself.
And I find it also somewhat concerning to me that if, when I know Jake, you went beyond, you're looking at October. Well, there wasn't anything, looking at beyond April, and periodically, there are snowstorms beyond April first. But maybe it ought to be an extension of that, but, I mean, if you have a week of sun, there certainly would be no snow watch. I don't, I don't know.
Problem is, when there's a policy, there's a policy. It's from here to here, you can't, you know.
Depending on the weather.
Who's gonna be the arbiter of whether on snow watch duty was necessary because of the weather?
And you gotta remember, there's give and take, because April first, people always cut it out, but there's April. My contracts go to April fifteenth, because there's always a week or two before that, and, and then you may get some snow in October. There's been Halloween's where we got snow or before that. So then, then there's some give and take.
Right, and also keep in mind, I guess, just put it in perspective, if we get a big long snow and I come in back into work at nine o'clock at night and I don't leave till four o'clock the following evening, it doesn't cost you anything from nine o'clock at night till it's eight o'clock the next morning. You know, if we've got people sick or people on vacation, or we don't have enough people because, you know, the snow, or maybe, you know, when it's, they're under heavy loads and stuff's, you know, stuff's getting used heavy, stuff breaks. So sometimes I'll be in here trying to get this fixed so we can get back, people back out on the roads, or they're out in a different vehicle, I fix this thing so it can get back out. It doesn't cost you anything and I've never put in anything for that. So I'm certainly not trying to game the system if it's easier for guys to.
We're looking at all these possibilities, scenarios, that's all.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's.
So Don, you're gonna do a little rewrite on some of these things?
Yeah.
Next, we're looking at potential for village medical changes. Marshall.
We're not covering the policies as they.
Policy manual updates?
That's not connected.
Pardon?
We've run out of time. No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
The policy manual updates? You mean eight five medical insurance, that, that one?
Okay.
Okay, now you gotta.
I don't know. I've got grant to decommission. We have potential medical changes. We discussed the policy manual updates unless eight five is part of that. Is eight five part of that?
No.
I'll put it in there just in case, in case we get it.
Oh, oh, okay.
So this whole stuff about eight five, eight six, and eight seven are.
She's gonna, she's gonna be talking about it.
And where's eight nine?
Right, because that comes under medical changes, that's eight five, eight.
Well, the, I looked at two things. One was the, I know there's been some discussion of changing the percentage of health insurance premiums that the employees are responsible for. So I worked up, like, what a ten percent change in the employees' responsibility would look like, both from the village's perspective and from the employees. Is the percentage of their incomes given, no, if they had this or that annual salary, how that would impact their pay? I'm, I'm Switzerland here, I just wanted to present the numbers so that you can be, so you can make an informed decision. So do you wanna just look it over and ask questions, or do you want me to?
I think you should give a little detail behind it if you don't mind.
Sure. I looked at historically, over the last year, what the total health insurance premiums we paid per month. That's the twenty thousand dollars on the top row. Annually, it's two hundred forty-one thousand, almost two forty-two. So ten percent of that is twenty-four thousand. So if we're going, say, from having the employees pay ten percent of their premiums to twenty percent, then that is, we're talking about twenty-four thousand dollars. That would save the village around twenty-four thousand dollars a year. So far, so good. Okay, and then the second piece here, the employee premiums. That's just, different employees are paying different premiums. So I was just trying to say, if your annual pay is forty thousand and your monthly premium is fifteen eighty-seven, then that's the green area on the bottom table. If your annual pay is forty thousand, your premiums are fifteen eighty-seven a month, then a ten percent increase in what you pay would be equal to about a four point seven five percent pay cut. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Whereas if your premiums are five fifty-seven a month, you're making seventy thousand, then that would be the yellow, we'd be looking at just under one percent pay cut. Effective pay cut. Anybody have questions about that? More I can expound on?
So the difference is in premium is ones like a family plan and the lowest one, I assume, is a single plan?
Exactly.
I don't know what the middle two are, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know either.
Subscriber and subscriber and children, and then subscriber and spouse.
Ah, okay. Yeah, I just, I pulled out the four amounts that showed up on the spreadsheets and did it for each of those.
So the orange is subscriber and spouse?
Is that?
I believe that's subscriber and children, because, you know, one person can have like three kids.
Because you could have one kid or you could have six kids, and it's still the same premium.
Okay. Yeah, and those middle two, they're pretty close. There's not any children in those amounts. So really, I mean, I just wanted to share that. And the other information I have is kind of completely different. So if we're ready to move on, I can give you my other sheet. Are we ready to move on?
Yep.
I'll just, just one.
So this is.
I know what you're gonna get to say.
This is the ten percent.
Out of all employees?
No, what I was gonna say is.
Out of this amount of.
Doesn't the union contract expire May of next year? Well, but the question is, when are you gonna start renegotiating it? It took a long time the last time, and May is gonna be here before you know.
Yeah, yeah, because.
You know?
We tried to do a longer one, but.
We went three.
So they're gonna, well, for four years.
You gotta start thinking about renegotiating that contract before it expires again.
But yet they're getting three percent or four and a half percent increase per year. So by the time you get done, they're over a eighteen percent increase and you're still only four percent. With this, right?
I'm not following.
Okay.
This is.
These are not going to increase yearly necessarily. Okay? I don't think that they increase yearly.
Oh, the premiums?
So they're going to be.
Historically, they've gone up fifteen to eighteen percent. This year, it's about six point seven percent, I think.
Yeah, they pull ups.
Yeah, premiums go up, yeah, they're usually in the teens. They're usually in the double digits. This year, because of the high deductible plan that we switched two years ago, that was because the premiums usually went up less.
Okay, usually go up a lot.
I did send out those numbers that, that were up.
Okay.
So this is for over, for one year as opposed to four years.
Right. Yeah. I just took, this is a snapshot based on the past single year of numbers. All right, so far, so good?
Yeah.
This one's a little stereotyped. Little numbers, get out and read that. This one, I looked at Bond, our insurance carrier suggested that we might be able to save some money on retirees' insurance premiums. So I can give you a tour of the spreadsheet, first of all. This circle here, this is the plan that we're currently offering.
I think that's more Lilo.
Lilo, excuse me. We pay, there's an annual premium per retiree and, no, there's pretty, it's good coverage. It's a good plan, it covers Medicare, was it A, B, and D? Something like that, but we pay currently a, a premium of forty-eight seventy-eight per retiree. What has been suggested is one of these three Medicare Advantage plans. What happens there is that the retirees are direct billed. And we would then potentially reimburse them for the increasing cost. I wanna especially point out this plan, the blue cross select in the gray. For this one, there is no premium. There's zero premium. So if the village is reimbursing the retirees for their premiums, the village would have no cost at all. That whole, the first row under here where village costs, under our current plan, we're paying seventy-eight thousand dollars a year to pay for retirees' premiums. The main difference between the current plan and this blue cross select is the maximum out-of-pocket cost. For our current plan, this is in the lower part here, kind of at the center of the page, the current out-of-pocket max is thirty-four hundred a year, and that includes prescriptions. With the blue cross select, the pre, or the out-of-pocket maximum is almost double that, and it does not include prescriptions. There's a separate deductible for prescriptions. So I tried to look at the difference in cost if we were to offer a stipend to the retirees to make them whole, so that they wouldn't be out that difference in, out-of-pocket max. Is that making sense so far? Okay. Then there was, it was quite a mess looking at these prescriptions. So for these purposes, I would like to just ignore the blue cross advanced and the blue cross value. The only differences in these plans are their treatment of prescriptions and the premiums. The blue cross advanced and the blue cross value both have premiums that are significantly less than for the plan that we're currently offering. We're good so far? So I did two, in this chart here, the first group of numbers is if we were to offer a full thirty-three hundred dollar stipend to cover that difference in out-of-pocket max, plus the deductible for prescriptions. What would that cost us per retiree? And I assumed sixteen retirees, because that's how many we currently cover. If we went from our current plan to this blue cross select with full stipend distributed to each retiree, we, it looks as to me as though we would save a little over nineteen thousand dollars a year. If we went with the blue cross advanced or blue cross value, even if we went with the highest premiums, the blue cross value, we'd still be saving over six thousand dollars a year. Makes sense so far? Any questions?
Yeah.
Is the, the current plan, it's forty-eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars per retiree, is that the, the total cost divided by sixteen retirees, or is that?
That's per retiree.
Okay, because there's some that are on. Right, why just, because there's some that are on Medicare? I forget if it's when you're over sixty-five, some of them are not sixty-five yet, they're still on a regular health insurance, and some of them are on Medicare where you're just paying a supplemental, right?
Yeah.
Others saying no.
Everyone's, all of those employees are, that we pay for the same amount, the four oh six, unless they chose to not go on our plan.
Hold on, we're, so it's just like Medicare, they're ready? There's nobody that's still getting regular.
Are there any retirees under the age of sixty-five? That's the question. So, so everybody, because once you're sixty-five, you gotta get Medicare. So then, then, then all you need is a Medicare Advantage.
Or supplemental or whatever.
Because, so the, the under sixty-five retirees still contest under the age of sixty-five.
Are you good? Yeah, no, I just didn't notice there was anybody who was under six or five, basically.
Well, we did have someone who was considered kind of a working senior, which is what we need to change in the policy. Because in the policy, it states that the working, it doesn't clarify if, if the working senior needs to work with the village or anywhere to be able to get, there's different plans they could get, so we need to change that.
We added working senior in the last one, I think it said that they, you know, if they were still working at the village. If someone worked at the village and they were sixty-eight years old, they wouldn't have to switch over to Medicare.
It just didn't say the village.
Yeah, they could stay on our plan, but if they're working somewhere else that offers insurance.
Yes.
Then they had to switch to that one, and then they could switch back to the village one after they retired from that place. Like, say they left here after twenty years, worked somewhere else, got insurance for ten years, or, or let's say, five years there, then they retired or left that work, then the village would pick up their policy again, or pick up their policy after that.
So are, are we morphing into a policy discussion? Is, does anyone have questions about these plans that I can answer? I think the savings are, are really significant. I did include some questions that I did not find answers to at the bottom. I don't know what it would look like legally, how a stipend might be taxed for the retirees, I'm not sure about that. And it's possible with the, any one of these Medicare Advantage plans, these tier five drugs, if anyone is taking those, they're gonna meet their deductible and could potentially pay much more than under the current plan. I would say for the majority of situations, these Medicare Advantage plans with a stipend offered are gonna be at least as good for the retirees as what we have now. But there is a possibility that if someone's taking these specialty tier five drugs, that could be an issue.
So we had just talked to Bond when we first started on with them, and they were just surprised that we were still having such a rich Medicare plan and as a lot of times, people being moving toward, obviously. obviously, it has to be comparable, but, so we're just wanting to give you the information that there are other options. And we've also been working with the union, um, Jo, uh, Marcia and I have been working with John, and, um, they're gonna let us know when they start going into discussions, cause we're gonna end up, her and I are gonna work on the medical portion, just because we, we feel that a lot of it needs a little bit of clarification. We would like to talk to you guys about that too at some point.
One more meeting here, and I need to build on that, since I'm a, I signed a contract with, with the board. Historically, the superintendent's always been developing obligations, and it's leaving open my signatures and this contract, so.
It was, it was just clarifying questions on one, um, when they were gonna start meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna head to seat unless anyone's got any.
Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you, Marcia.
Thank you very much. All right, um, due to the hour. Grant to decommission the wells, and I figured that until four in the evening last week.
Can we do that? Yeah, I can do, it's a two second, for me especially, really short update, I've reached out to Matt Chaplin, let me know about it, I reached out to, uh, Jeff Dunway at the town, I had not, he, he said he was gonna call me one morning, I think I was busy, uh, so he did not, um, call me back yet, so I just plan on trying to touch base with him and discuss that, we were included in the town.
A part of five hundred thousand.
In the Seminole, yeah, yep, we were included in that Seminole, and it would be the town to be the lead agency on it, so I wanted to lay the groundwork for what an IMA would be, um, between the town, cause they would be the lead agency on the project, um, on every aspect of it, it was something that was safe, I think it was five hundred and thirty-one or something like that, that was approved through this ready commission, but I didn't support it, not even quite sure which, where the funding would come from yet, or who the, uh, uh, person would be, or, I mean, who the, uh, agency, what agency it would be, but they said that, hey, there's money there, so, you know, it was nice to be able to get that into that thing, and this is a sandbar wells only.
Is there a, is there a tie, who says?
When does, when does the town have to accept the grant and all that kind of stuff?
I am, they, I finally found, thank you, I finally found a, something online, it was very difficult, there was a sixty-six page document about this ready commission on these projects that are approved, and it, it, that's all, really all the detail, Matt sent me something the other day, this preliminary information, I do, it was today, maybe, or this morning.
Yeah, well, matter, Jeff should know.
Yeah.
When, you know, the deadline is to accept the grant.
Yeah.
I was gonna sell this, but, but.
Just long as we don't miss.
Right.
We, we just gotta get whatever the deal is with the town done before, whenever they gotta accept the grant, so they don't lose the grant.
If, if they did, they did drop, it was fifteen percent, now they, they dropped it.
We seem to accept just a partial grant, you know, and drop the, the well.
Right. Right, and then, and again, this is sandbar wells only, there's five well houses and sandbar wells, and there's three rock wells that are out there, eight wells total, um, and that's what we looked at, and it's not a, I think, one of the things, even in the grant stuff, is the abandonment of the wells, it's not a, it's a proper decommission of the wells, where they would be, you know, the wells would be, the case would be pulled or perforated, gravel, bentonite clay, done according to the AWWA standards. Uh, the Board of Health, um, who regulates drinking water, drinking water supply, would, they don't have an approval process, from what I understand, for the decommission, but they wanna be able to comment on our, what our plans are. And we've got preliminary numbers from a well company, um, I believe it was Moody and Associates, um, there's a takeoff of them, that was about two, I can't remember, we were talking about two and a quarter or so, two hundred twenty-five thousand for those few wells down there, but that was with the village doing some of the, uh, securing some of the gravel and the trucking and things like that that would be needed, so it was a little, little different. So there could be, that may be able to be some of our offset, that five percent is in services too, depending on how the contract is, so.
Driving, uh, which is.
Is that just on well housing?
Um, they were all, I think they were, what they would call presumed asbestos material, what is that, PACM? Presumed asbestos containment materials, any coughs or cairns or crouts, and mastics and things like that, that prior to nineteen seventy-eight, there were certain, well, the sandbar wells were built just around that time.
Yeah, it's about wondering.
But, yeah, and so that's, there, you know, five of them are in building, you know, so, um, so I think there would be a certain amount of testing that would be done, or sometimes you would not, you'd save the testing, depending on how much material there was, save the testing and treat it as if it was asbestos containing material and, you know.
So do we have a time constraint with the town?
Um.
For this?
Matt, and you know, Matt talked to me about it last week, and he said, reach out to Jeff, I reached out to Jeff, he was gonna call me in the morning, like I said, and, and I had not heard, that was, I think, Friday morning, um, but I'm assuming he was tied up, and, uh, so I was gonna reach back out to him today, I was just, I was, I think you saw me, I was mechanic today, and trying to get a few things squared away, so. Don't go in the office much.
Cause Bill, Bill may have offered, you know, he wants to.
I like that motion.
You're making that motion, you wanna do that.
I'll second.
I can do a June, I'll.
Bill Landau, and he was willing to, of course, he doesn't know what's, he would take care of demolishing the little brick building. But he may not if there's asbestos.